Fall to order this meeting in the King George County Board of Supervisors. We will start with public comment and if anyone would like to provide or give public comment, we'll use this position right here between Mr. Stonehill and Mr. Miller. If you do want to provide public comment, please give your name, your address. Please limit your comments to three minutes in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. And is there anyone here for public comment?
Good evening. My name is Carrie Gonzalez. I live at eighty-one sixteen Oak Crest Drive. I'm here as a community member and a parent of students in our schools. A few weeks ago, our military shot down a Chinese balloon that was found floating over our country. While it may still be uncertain as to exactly what that balloon was doing, I think we all know that it was very likely an example of an adversary engaging in suspicious activity. There are conflicts all over the world. We see it on the news every day. And in these examples of, in these conflicts, there are strict, very severe examples of democracy being under attack. It can be easy to forget, living here in King George, in rural King George County. It's a luxury really to live here and be able to forget that around the world, the United States of America has enemies who don't want us to continue our way of life, the global domination of freedom that we easily take for granted. So it's human really, in our experience, to care a lot about our own personal rights. We must however, remember that without collective investment in our greatest assets, we will not remain number one in the world. And the reason I bring all this up is because our schools house this county's, countries and counties' greatest assets, and that's our children. Last year, I provided you all with a bit of data regarding how King George local investment in our schools compared with that of other localities. Repeated underfunding of our schools has resulted in King George being near the very bottom of Pew Purple Investments across the state. In fact, I believe, I didn't pull it back up before coming this evening, I believe we were sixth from the bottom out of one hundred and thirty-two, one hundred and thirty-three localities. And our local match is barely at the bare minimum compared with other localities who choose to invest much more. This year, I believe, as you'll see later this evening, Dr. Boyd has put together an excellent budget presentation with a new approach to data. He's highlighted the need for increasing our teacher compensation to keep us competitive, which is directly aligned with the priorities identified by our community during the development of our strategic plan. And what this tells you is that our community wants us to invest in our schools. So back to my opening point, why does this all matter? Because our basic freedoms depend on it, right? When we provide a quality education for our students, our students graduate, they get jobs, they become productive citizens in our society. They don't end up in our prisons, they don't, they require, they are less of a strain on our community, and we're able to invest where we need to. We can invest in our future and less in law enforcement and things of that nature. So our schools provide our next members of the military, they provide Naval Academy graduates, they generate the next engineers to develop our next weapon systems to help keep our country safe. They provide teachers to generate the next, you know, to educate the next generations. All of this is highlighting the need for investment at, even at our local level here in King George, right, to help provide assurance that we will be able to maintain our way of life into the future. That's a broad, right? It's painting with a broad stroke, but we can do it. Other counties can do it. We need to fully fund the schools this year, and I implore you to consider that when you are reviewing this evening's school budget. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Hi, my name is Anthony Stats, nine zero zero seven Claire Street. Kind of pigging back off of her comments, our schools are an untapped wealth of potential. I had the honor of being here at the fire station for about ten hours or so, and after talks with many firemen, we realized in this county, we were being underserved. We have the need of so many more firemen, so many more police officers. And the schools are a great way to link that pool of people who, you know, we have a great nursing program. Why on top of that do we not have a fire program, a police officer program? And so, fully funding our schools this year starts that process and starts to making sure that we're able to do these projects the next coming years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stats.
Hello folks, my name is Gail Hock at two-two-oh-five River Drive. Been in the county for fifty-five years. And I'd like to remind us tonight of Dr. Gladys West. We've just celebrated her in many ways. And for those of you who have met her and spoken with her, you'll learn that she is a very humble person. And she will fully attribute so much of her interest and persistence and endurance to teachers. And we have to remember that Dr. West was at one time a little girl. And she was in the process of becoming a woman who would change the world. But a teacher, a teacher made that difference. And you will hear Dr. Boyd tonight talk about the most important thing that we can give our children in this county and our communities and our neighborhoods and our businesses is a good quality teacher. And for that, we need a fully funded budget and more. We need for people who understand that even if they don't have children currently in the school system, that there is another Gladys West who needs a strong teacher and role model. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hock. Anyone else for public comment? Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online? Did any board members receive any correspondence to be entered into the record? Okay. Then we will close public comment and we will move on. Move on to the budget process timeline. Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. Could we first introduce the members of our Citizens Budget Advisory Committee? Recognize them and that way everyone knows who they are. Thanks very much.
Great idea. Thank you so much for the suggestion. I'm going to ask if each of our members would be willing to introduce themselves and just tell us who, which district you represent.
My name is Ed Frank and I'm representing the at-large.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
My name is Kathy Thompson.
Which district are you with, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah.
James Monroe, got it. Thank you, ma'am.
And my name is Cecil Chapman and I'm representing the Dowland District.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman, and thank you for volunteering to serve on this board. I do appreciate you here and please feel free, as we continue to discuss, you all will obviously have an opportunity to participate in that discussion as well. So thank you for coming and being involved. Okay. Now we'll move on to the budget process timeline and so I'll hand it over to Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you have, this is the kickoff meeting and obviously we're kind of changed things up a little bit this year. We have the benefit of the school board budget being presented to you all. I know that's, normally it's done a little bit later and I think this is very useful and very helpful because it gives you a perspective of what their proposed needs are and what, you know, so we can begin that dialogue. I think last year where I think we realized that it was a pretty tough process, given what the state was going through and trying to come up with an educational budget and then what you all were doing. And I think that the hats off to the school board and the staff. Mr. Boyd, of course, was serving in an interim role and now we're happy that he is your superintendent. And he and I are meeting regularly and talking about a lot of different aspects of not just the budget, but just in general about the county and the school relationship. And so I think doing it this way, I think is a very useful tool to begin your process. So let me just tell you a little bit about the budget process timeline. I think we will show you what, how this is processed and how this is, how it gets to this point. You have the meetings, the finance director issues kind of a notice to all the departments and the agencies to prepare their budgets. Of course, we're doing it a little bit different as well in two categories. One with the timing process of the school board's presentation, but also the CIP. We're wanting the CIP to be pretty closely behind the approval of the operating budget. And so we're working in that respect. So back in December, Ms. Hahn started that process out with the department heads. Departments, the agencies submit their budgets in January. Budget and staff review, January, February, my involvement starts after they have kind of picked it through and that started in February. And then, of course, here we are tonight on the ninth of March. And then what we will do is based on all the work sessions and the discussion that you give us, we will then present a proposed budget to you and then let you begin the process of working through that. We are looking at a public hearing, hopefully sometime in April of twenty-twenty-three, that's the goal. The adopt the budget by the first of May. Obviously, I don't think we're having the, we're facing the same thing that we dealt with with the school board or the school budgets in general statewide like we were last year. So I don't know that this timeline is going to be a problem. I think we can do it. It obviously is your commitment and we will commit to you to have information ready to go at each session. I think the plan has kind of been the Thursdays, I think is what you all indicated you would carve out. And so we'll make that work for you all. So, okay, so the next. Okay, that's just some backup, the memos. I don't think we can read that, but. Okay, so key factors affecting the FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget that are going into what we're doing already with it. Health insurance contributions are going to see around a ten percent increase. The Rappahannock Juvenile Detention Center budget is going to have an operational increase. Funding for a full year of three positions hired for half of the year in Department of Fire and Rescue and Emergency Services. So that was agreed to last year and so now we're doing a full year. Funding for full year of two positions hired for half of the year in the, in FY twenty-two, twenty-three in the sheriff's office. And then, of course, we have new position requests, which some of the department heads are here tonight, obviously, to present those. And then we have some one-time expenditures, which we possibly could use some fund balance in the current fiscal year. Revenue projections will not be available until late March. And then, of course, what's affecting this as well would be earlier decisions in the, back in the fall where we agreed to do the proration of personal property taxes and how that will affect the operations of the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer. And I believe that Ms. Hart is here to talk about that as well. So, let's see. Okay. Just kind of shows you a breakdown of approved expenditures in the, for the budget last year. Oh, for this year, current year, excuse me, which a little bit over a hundred and eight million dollars was the total budget. Of course, the revenues match that. As you can see, the local sources, local sources make up way over half of that budget of fifty-seven percent. And then we get thirty-eight thousand, or thirty-eight percent of our revenue is state funds. And that just is a snapshot. I'll certainly answer any questions if there's any need for information that you see at the outset, let us know. But I know that the headliner is not me. I'm the bad warm-up act. So I'm going to turn it over to, back to the chairman, but I believe that the next person up is Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Did anyone have any questions or comments they had about the presentation Mr. Miller gave us? Okay. Dr. Boyd. Thank you so much for coming out and thank you for providing the information. Really appreciate you getting it to us. I appreciate you and the school board getting it to us early to consider. Definitely helps. So thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Granger. Thank you, board members. Thank you, folks that spoke for the public comments and I, we appreciate the opportunity. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of the School Division this evening. Had a wonderful day. We had the STEM night tonight at the high school and it was well attended. There was a lot of folks over there. I saw Ms. Cupka over there and she said she was going to pray for me tonight, so. I, and I told her I'm blessed. I feel blessed to be able to give this presentation tonight. I certainly think the challenge is one that you guys hold. I can certainly deliver the information, but to wrestle with all of the requests and the number of things that you have to consider when it comes to budget season, I certainly appreciate the challenge that you have before you. If you guys could draw your attention to the screen, I'll begin to go through my presentation. This is King George County Schools' projected revenue funding request. Next slide, please. So what you'll see here on the right-hand side is the budget development timeline. And I won't go into great detail on this because really we're already into the bottom line of March. The presentation to the Board of Supervisors on March ninth. You can see that there was a lot of legwork and meetings and conversations that led up to this evening. And hopefully you will see that reflected in the budget presentation tonight, that a lot went into this consideration. Next slide, please. So what goes into this decision or this presentation? You'll see on the left-hand side, that big circle in the middle is the superintendent and I have that responsibility. And Virginia code mandates that it is my responsibility to deliver what is termed a needs-based budget. So what you're going to see this evening is from a number of avenues and a number of different sources of information, we've determined need and you'll see all of those areas circling, my circle, that blue circle in the middle. So we consulted our strategic plan. Just a few years ago, we pulled together a lot of folks in the community and created a strategic plan that identified four goals. You'll see those four goals clearly identified in this budget presentation and you'll see most of these budget requests link themselves back to that strategic plan for the School Division. We've pulled together a Budget Advisory Committee this year. Mrs. Bender's on that committee, Mr. Frank is on that committee and we've got some other, Mrs. Gonzalez is also on that committee. We've got some other folks in the community that have participated in that. We've met a few times and we'll continue to meet after this presentation. Obviously, we need some information from the General Assembly and the Superintendent of Public Instruction. Every year, we take a staff survey to make sure that our staff has what they need to do their job. You guys have before you, in your budget booklet, one of the documents that we have used in the past and have continued to use this year, it's termed the Budget Builder. And it's the feedback we receive from our supervisors in the school board office and our principals that are at the school level. I can certainly dive in deep into that tonight if you'd like. I was hoping to give you kind of the thirty-thousand-foot view tonight, stay a little bit out of the weeds, but that doesn't mean that the invitation is not there. You guys had this, I know that there's a lot of information here. So if you are continuing to go through it, please feel free to reach out to me. I would enjoy the opportunity and really even challenge to dig through any of those lines with you because it's certainly beneficial for both of us, I think, to dig down as deep as we want to go. And then finally, we've had a number of community forums this season and we'll continue to do that here moving into the future, just to hear a little bit from our community, our parents, those folks that don't have often direct opportunity to speak on the school board and on the school board budget. So all of that information goes into this presentation. We've presented it to the school board and then ultimately we come to you this evening with our budget request. So next slide, please. The school board budget is a complicated matter in some respects, but it is often predicated or is predicated on what is termed average daily membership. So in essence, that's a, that's a, you know, an acronym used to describe how many students go to your school division. So what you'll see in the graph there, all the way dating back to two thousand and sixteen, is the number of students we had in the fall in the blue bar graph and then our actual adjusted March thirty-first average daily attendance is in the yellowish graph, our bar graph on the right-hand side. So not going through all of that data, you'll see that we are estimating that next year we'll have roughly four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven students in King George County public schools. Now, that gray table over on the right-hand side is one that I want to draw everybody's attention to because it's a conversation that I think deserves a greater level of maturity at this point. You'll see our six schools on the left-hand, on the left-hand side of that table, starting with King George Elementary School. The next column is going to show you the current enrollment as of January nineteenth of those schools. And then on the far right-hand column, you'll see the capacity. It's titled Blueprint or Documentation, but it's in essence, the capacity of those buildings, the size that those, the number of pupils that building was built for. So the buildings in red right now, Sealston Elementary School, Potomac Elementary School and actually King George High School are overcapacity as far as the number of students in attendance right now. So certainly a conversation that we'll continue to have, I believe, in the CIP process and other areas, but one that I certainly want to bring to everyone's attention as we talk about attendance in King George. Next slide, please. And at any time, if you guys want to stop me. Yes, sir.
Mr. Collins, you had a question for Dr. Boyd?
Yes, sir. So King George High School, fifteen-eleven and fifteen-hundred, the middle school is a thousand and two. So next year, the consortium, or whatever they call it, will be a thousand and two going into the middle school. I mean, well.
Can you go back to that last slide?
So it'll be a low number, so it won't be overcapacity next year. Is that correct?
So say that again. You're saying right now at the middle school, there's a thousand and two, but fifteen-eleven at the, at the high school. So we'll graduate about three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and fifty-ish. And then we've got a rather large eighth grade moving into ninth grade class. I don't know off the top of my head right now, but it's, all of our classes at the middle school are relatively large right now. If you figure you got three grade levels there at a thousand, you're, you know, most class sizes in King George County, K to twelve are three, three fifty, three seventy-five-ish. But I can certainly get you that specific number if you'd like. Yes, sir. Next slide, please. Okay, so in Virginia, in public education, we use this term called local composite index. And just quickly, what a local composite index is, is there's a hundred and thirty-two school divisions in the state of Virginia. And one of the ways that they use to suggest funding in the state is to rank all of those school divisions according to their ability to pay for public education. So they look at three factors. They look at the true value of real estate property, they look at the adjusted gross income, and they look at the taxable retail sales in the county to determine a number they call the local composite index. And basically what it equates to is the amount of money that the state will put forward for public education and the amount of money that they suggest that the locality put forward for public education. So currently, our local composite index is point three eight oh five, which means in essence that the state will put forward sixty-two percent of the money for the public school division with the understanding or the expectation that the locality will pick up at minimum thirty-eight percent. I can tell you in most localities, they pay, they fund the school division above the local composite index. Next slide, please. Okay, so as I mentioned just a moment ago, our budget presentation this evening or our budget goals are the same goals that we have in our strategic plan. These were the four goals that we pulled together from our strategic plan. And again, this was a number of meetings over a number of months with a number of stakeholder groups. And if you see those goals there, goal number one is one we're going to spend a lot of time talking about this evening, employee investment and development. Making sure that we take care of the people we have and making sure that we attract quality people to the School Division. Goal two is, talks about the quality of instruction we offer. Goal three is community collaboration, making sure we're connected and engaged with our community. A very important goal right now in public schools across the Commonwealth. And then finally, four, another very important goal, making sure that our children are attending a safe, secure and healthy school. Okay, those are the four goals that we have in our strategic plan right now and this budget presentation will reference those. Next slide, please. All right, so I have a very good friend of mine, a former superintendent. He was superintendent in Richmond County. Some of you may know him, Dr. Greg Smith. He always told me that any good budget presentation has to tell a story, all right? So this is kind of the beginning of the story. And the title of the story is that teachers matter. So no matter what research you pull, no matter what you Google, no matter where you go to find information about education, you will find that the most important factor when it comes to a child's education is a qualified teacher, bar none. I give people the example all the time that if you had the most beautiful school with all the bells and whistles and computers and everything and you had an oak tree with a qualified teacher underneath of it, I'm sending my own children to the oak tree. Because a qualified teacher makes the biggest impact or biggest difference on public education, without a doubt. So as we move forward, you'll see a lot of this presentation and a lot of the considerations we're making have to do with making sure that we consider that and that we take care of our teachers. And, you know, I think we all know at this point that not only across the Commonwealth, but across the country, there's a shortage of teachers right now. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that. And because that resource right now is finite and we can't find enough of them to fill the positions we have, if we don't make this a priority in this budget moving forward, I'm concerned about the future of King George County schools. Next slide, please. Okay, I said in, I said in this presentation, this presentation was given by the University of Virginia and all of this data is pulled from the Virginia Department of Education, but I'm going to illustrate what I mean by teacher vacancy or a teacher shortage. If you look on the left-hand side, the yellow section, this is the information from the state. In October of two thousand and twenty-one, the vacancy rate in the state of Virginia was three point oh six. Just one year later, it escalated to three point eight six. Now, what does that mean? It's kind of an arbitrary number. If you look at the bullets below, it'll explain it in terms we can all understand. In the state of Virginia, there's ninety-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-one teachers. If you had a vacancy rate of three point eight six, that means there's three thousand, six hundred and two teachers that we can't find. There's empty classrooms with no teachers in them or long-term subs or any number of creative options that folks have come up with. What does that mean for your children? What does that mean for the kids? If those three thousand, six hundred and two teachers were elementary school teachers, there's nearly eighty thousand kids right now in the state of Virginia that do not have a qualified teacher sitting in front of them. That's pretty impactful to me. If they were high school teachers, there's nearly a half million high school kids that enter a class every day that do not have a qualified teacher. And I can tell you, digging deeper into this information and looking deeper into this, our larger, more affluent school divisions, your Fairfax's, your Loudon's and even your Stafford's at this point, they're able to attract these teachers and they, and that's where the teachers, the shortage is not that great in those school divisions. It's your midsize and it's your smaller school divisions right now that are having extremely difficult time attracting teachers. Look on the right-hand side, you'll see King George County's information. When I was in this presentation, they showed a table that had the twenty school divisions that had the highest vacancy rate across the state of Virginia. Unfortunately, King George County was on that list of the highest vacancy rates across the state of Virginia. Of all a hundred and thirty-two school divisions, we were the twelfth worst across the state. Our vacancy rate was eight point one percent in two thousand and twenty-one, October, and it's raised to nine point one-two percent in October of two thousand and twenty-two. Almost three times the state average. We have three hundred and nineteen full-time teachers in the state, in King George County. So kindergarten through twelfth grade, we have three hundred and nineteen teachers or positions. If we have a vacancy rate in our county of four thousand students of nine point one-two percent, that's twenty-nine teachers in our own county here in King George that we're, that we don't have right now. And what does that mean as far as the kids in our county? That means that six hundred and thirty-eight elementary school students, if they were all elementary school teachers, do not have a teacher right now. And this is nothing against the amazing and, I mean, we are so blessed to have the people that are showing up to do the job right now. I don't want to disservice that in this presentation because there are people that are coming out of the woodwork right now in order to be long-term subs, to fill in, to be paraprofessionals, to do a number of things. In fact, Mr. Frank here, I always put him on the spot sometimes, but he pretty much substitutes every day at the high school right now. I appreciate those folks, but right now, we are light twenty-nine qualified teachers in classrooms. So when you are light twenty-nine teachers, you don't have that teacher under the oak tree right now. Your content, your curriculum, your classroom management, all of those things struggle when you have an unqualified teacher in the classroom. Next slide, please. Okay, so we have a finite amount of teachers. And so what that means in this world right now is that we are competing with the localities around us. So we share a border with these counties around us. There's six in total, including King George. And going into this school year, after last year's salary adjustments and such, we fell to fifth place as far as a starting teacher salary. Our starting teacher salary. Our starting teacher salary currently is $46,419, and we are only ahead of Caroline County. So we have seen, and I can name, but I won't this evening, particular teachers who left our county to go to, to surrounding counties because, number one, many of them live in those localities. Many of our young teachers live in Fredericksburg, Spotsy, Stafford, and even Westmoreland. And they told us at the end of last year, I'm, I'm going to stay home. They're paying more, and I'm, I'm just going to stay home. I don't have to commute to King George County anymore, and I think I can teach in, in my home locality. In all of my years in King George County, I can tell you that typically, as far as first year's teacher salary was concerned, we usually fell around third place. Stafford has an immense number of resources right now, much closer to, to a Fairfax, Prince William. Spotsy's growing at a pretty rapid rate, but in my time here, looking through, you know, some historical information, usually King George is right up around third place in that position. Fifth is, is a spot that we're really not comfortable with. Next slide. So at the time of this presentation, the recommendation across the state was to give, the state recommended everybody get a 5% raise. Right now, we have three budgets floating out there. We have the governor's budget, we have the delegates' budget, and we have the senate budget. The senate and the delegates' budget right now have a 7% increase that they're suggesting. And again, we're waiting to see where that all comes out across the state. But at the time of this presentation, if everybody gave a 5% salary, again, it doesn't do, it doesn't do much with the fifth-place position we're in. And again, you know, teachers are navigating and trying to figure out where to go. And I, I, I will say here that there's a lot of good that King George has. There's, there's a lot of good. We can certainly convince some folks that King George is the place to be when, when you're comparing us to some of those other localities. But as these differences in salary begin to increase, and they are, even across this, even across the scale, we're having a difficult time convincing them that the, the goodness of our community outweighs a salary that they would bring home for their family and their ability to put food on the table. Next slide, please. In 2021, taking a look at this, didn't come out real well on this presentation, but King George is about the seventh school division on the bottom of that graph, and that font that didn't come out well. What you'll see is the other localities, the, I think there's 16 or 17 there, that we typically are, are competing for teachers with. And in 2122, you'll see that the starting salary, which is that bottom line for us, was $44,615. We're, we're keeping company with, with the bottom five there of those 16 school divisions. And then even five years later, after they've stayed with us for five years, you can still, you can still see as you move up to that next line graph, we haven't made much progress on those other school divisions. So again, years ago, five, 10 years ago, when, you know, you would go to a job fair and there would be hundreds and hundreds of teachers looking for jobs, this wasn't as important as it is now. Right now, when we have 20 positions in the school division currently that we cannot fill with a qualified teacher, this becomes extremely important because we, we can't attract the teachers to the position. Next slide, please. Every year, we ask our staff if they have the equipment, the supplies, and the programs that they need in order to do their job. And I'm happy to say that this data, all three of those pie graphs, will show you that about nine out of 10 teachers that we have will tell you that they have the supplies, the equipment, and the programs and services they need. So that's an area we feel comfortable with. That's an area that we're, that we're proud of, honestly, and, and one that is a secondary priority in this budget request. Part of this staff survey is also an opportunity to write in responses. And what you'll see below is, if you remember, we had four goals in our strategic plan. Those are the goals in our strategic plan, employee, employee investment and development, and so on. Of the written-in responses, which there were hundreds of, 57% of those responses were asked, were asking us as the administration of the school division to make sure that we invest in our employees. Only 16% talked about it, the, the instruction, only 8% talked about the engagement with the community, 19% with the, the actual facility. The majority of the, the comments were, "Please consider my salary. Please make sure that you figure out how to provide professional development. Please support me." It was, it was those kind of comments. Next slide, please. We get feedback from our professional organizations in the county. We have two. We've got King George Education Foundation. We've also got Virginia Professional Educators. So again, you'll see the same themes popping up in this. King George Education Foundation said that the priorities in their survey were three things. Number one, please increase compensation. Number two, make sure that we have an adequate and, and provide us with the additional staff that we've requested over the years. And then finally, a, a number three, support for our staff. If you look below, the Virginia Professional Educators said, and it's, and it's, in bold, "Please make our salary competitive. Make sure that we have a competitive salary so that we can maintain a highly qualified staff." I think you guys are all familiar at this point that this year, the cost of living adjustment was 8.7%. And, you know, even if we get this proposed raise, we're just trying to keep up with inflation at this point. But continuing on to the next slide. So our, our suggestion or proposal for a first-year teacher and for our salary, or excuse me, for our teacher salary scale is to raise it by 7.17% while raising all other salary scales by 5%. So the, the state is recommending, you know how the state pays with SOQ positions, they're, they're suggesting that we provide at least a 5% at the time of this presentation. We're suggesting that we would like to make sure that for our teacher scale, it's 7.17%. And, and why, why that odd number? Because what that odd number does is it puts us back up into the respectable position of being third in our surrounding localities as far as teacher salary. So again, we know that we're going to have a difficult time competing with Stafford. We actually, right now, given all the challenges going on in Spotsy, are competing quite well with them. But as far as salary, with, with this suggestion, we would be competing quite well with Fredericksburg, Caroline, and Westmoreland as well. So we may potentially be able to track some of those teachers back that we lost. Next slide, please. Okay, so now into the meat and potatoes, revenue summary. What you're going to see here on the left-hand side is fiscal year '23. So these were the allocations that were afforded the school division in this current fiscal year. And then what you'll see across the table is, as I said already, there's, there's three kind of competing budget requests in the state right now. So the governor's budget request is next. The House of Delegates follows that, and then the senate. As you work your way down, you'll see the state revenue that's required for the school division, other, other state revenues, our, our grant funds, other federal funds and other revenues. And then probably the most important one this evening is the local revenue. So given what we need, based on that needs-based budget that we'll present, and I'll talk a little bit more about what those expenditures are in the next slides or so. The, the, the numbers are, are, according to the governor's budget, it's 5.6 million. The House of Delegates would be a, a local request of 5.8 million, and then certainly hope, we're hoping and praying for the senate budget, which would be substantially less at 3.9 billion, depending on what budget passes. Next slide, please. Now, how does that break down? So the major differences between the-
Dr. Boyd, could I interrupt you real quick?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Collins, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Before you go past the revenue summary, I noticed in the, there's no, there's no account for the Medicaid money. I spoke to you that about earlier, it's usually about $450,000. So could you check on that and update it?
Yes, sir. Yep, I got a note. Thank you. So major differences between fiscal year '23 and '24, again, teacher and staff compensation. So if you, if you look at the factor, the 7.17% increase in the step for teachers, and then the 5% increase in the step for staff, it equates for about $2.2 million of that extra request. Just as the county just mentioned, we received our health insurance premium increase as well, and it came in at 9.9%. So right now, with the school division picking up that cost, it's 449,000. You have the budget builder again, and here, the budget builder is kind of the stuff portion. You know, it's not the teacher, it's not the personnel, it's not the human capital, it's the programs, it's, it's the software, it's the hardware of the school division. All of that can be found in the budget builder. That additional request is about 1 million. And then the additional staff request right now is 1.6 million, and I'll go through that in greater detail in the next slide.
Dr. Boyd?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Boyd, so the, the state generally is around 7% for increase of teacher salaries. How much, how many SOQ positions do we have, and what's the gap of the SOQ positions that, so we have to make up that other part also?
You want to know the, the difference between what the state is funding and what the locality has to fund?
So SOQ positions?
Yep.
At the 7%? And then, there's going to be a gap in how many?
Of what you got to cover. Yeah, okay. Okay, next slide, please. All right, so, so the positions requested, so again, you know, one of the questions is, how do we need this many positions? So you'll notice that a, a lot of these positions are positions that we've seen on our additional staffing requests over the years. I've had a lot of conversations with some of you, some of the board members, about the, the desire and the need to open up and expand our CTE offerings, our vocational offerings in, in the, in the county. Well, that first instructional position there, that work-based learning and our CTE specialists, that position's been in the budget for a few years. We're certainly hoping that we can connect the dots on, on that position so that we can begin to expand those vocational offerings in the state, or excuse me, in the, in the community. As you work your way down, you'll see the other requests from special services, which is our special education department, our student and family services is Ms. Fisher's department. And then as, as you continue down, you'll see maintenance, technology, transportation. I won't go on to all of those right now unless there's a specific question about a specific position.
Do you have a question? I'll start with Ms. Kupka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Boyd, for coming out this evening, by the way. What is, under King George Middle School, what is an activities director?
Okay, so over the past few years, the number of activities and sports at King George Middle School have, has not only increased in number, they're hoping actually to get a cross-country program there if they can. Again, and that's great for our students if we can pull that together this year. But basically, with that number of increased activities and sports, it's, it's, it's like the athletic director at the high school. Somebody that manages the scheduling, somebody that manages transportation for those activities, making sure that our students get to where they need to for, for those activities and sporting events.
So right now, you're doing that, you, your middle school athletic director gets a stipend, did you hear that correctly?
Yes, so right, right now, it's a teacher that teaches a full course load during the day and receives a stipend to do that. And really, what it's become, as, as I've grown to appreciate it, and, you know, Ms. Collins, a former principal and the cor, and the current principal there now, will tell you that it's quite a job. It's, it's one that is, that takes a lot of time for that individual. And I think currently, the stipend for that position is, is $3,900, and it typically involves all three seasons, your fall, your spring, your fall, your winter, and your spring, and most late nights. So they're, they're spending, I would say, on top of their full course load, probably on average, two to three evenings there every evening, putting in probably another 20, 25 hours a week for the entire school year.
Okay. Then one other question for right now. I see for the middle school and the high school, you're requesting funding for school security officers. What's the justification for that? Because we already fund deputies as school resource officers.
So I, I'm happy to kind of add that even just, just this morning, we're setting in, well, the justification, let me back up. Let me answer your question first. The justification is the, the need for additional hands to address many of the challenges that we have in the school division following specifically COVID and students coming back to school. Without going into great detail, the needs are real. So that's an important thing to bring up in this conversation as well. You know, this request that we have this eas, this evening is not just quantitative in terms of an additional number of students or an additional number of staff. Much of this request has to do with some qualitative issues as well. And, and I know it's, this is not a King George issue, this is not a Virginia issue, this is a national issue. You'll hear that we've learned a lot from having students, and really, everyone, stay in their basements for 18 months and then come back together and try to figure out how to live harmoniously. And that is seen probably very specifically in a place like a public high school with 1,500 kids trying to figure out how to do that again. So it, so it really boils down to the need for extra sets of hands, extra sets of eyes to make sure that we provide an ample amount of supervision for the needs that we see in the, in the schools right now.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll work my way down, just to keep it in row. Mr. Collins?
Dr. Boyd, so an activity directors, I, I have, I have pushed for an activities director, but not at $116,000 a year. The stipend was $3,900, and how you go from $3,900 to $116 is beyond me. I don't think that's really a, a good number for that particular job. And that's a statement, that's not a question.
Okay.
The school security officers, so will they be sworn employees of the sheriff's office?
No.
So they'll be who?
These are, these are not school resource officers. The, the, in fact, they're school employees. So again, without not, without getting into the specific roles and responsibilities of each of those groups, these individuals would be closer to, I say school administrators compared to school resource officers as far as their ability to conduct school business, but they don't rise to the level or the rank of school resource officers. They're, they actually are, and, you know, they're, they're on the pay scale of the ISS coordinator. And back to the athletic directors, what, what they, that's, that's the pay scale for the athletic director at the high school right now, at, at step seven with the full benefits package. So I hear your point, and it's certainly something we can look at, but just to give you a, an idea of what that is.
So there's school security officers, I'm not a, I'm not a fan at all whatsoever if they're not sworn police officers. If they're going to be security officers, that, that usually means security, and they're going to need to take action if there's a security threat. And if they're not, if they don't have the authority, all they are is a witness. So when I, when I saw that in the budget, it popped out of me that it was, you know, there's other schools that have those and that's been fraught with problems because they really can't do anything. So that, that's my comment on that. And I understand that the behavior is off the chain. Behavior is off the chain because they closed the schools and kids were home. But you realize that Stafford County, we talk about the, the, the full-time teachers and the shortage throughout the nation. That's not just King George specifically, that's country-specific. King George County cannot solve this teacher crisis now. We, no matter how much money we put towards it, it's not going to solve the problem. Stafford has about 250 missing, right? The last number I saw was 250 that they're, you know, they're filling with substitutes and so forth. So if you look at the ratio from what we're at, it's not as bad as what they're at, even though their, their amount of students. I'm not saying that it's not important. I'm just saying that King George can't solve the national problem. So last year, So last year, we funded more positions, and you still didn't hire them. Where did the money go? I understand that y'all gave bonuses. But where did rest the money go for the breakage and so forth?
Well, we solve things in our operating budget, which, if you remember, we came to you at the end of the year and asked for relocation of certain funds to take care of some of those things. But it's also my understanding that I think we ended up giving you back the county, I want to say it was somewhere in the ballpark of $677,000 or somewhere. So again, I think what you're seeing in school budgets across the country right now, and most certainly in the Commonwealth, is when you need and you need to budget for certain positions, then we attempt, and we go into every school year thinking we need to get those positions because the need is in the school, in the school division, in the schools. When we do not fill those positions, about 80% of a school's operating budget is staff. So there's a large amount of money that ends up coming back to the locality when we don't fill those positions and when we don't come to request from you a need to shift those funds into, I can't remember what it was specifically last year, but we came to you at the end of the school year to request the need to appropriate money into a different instructional category.
So last year is about 20 or so increase in personnel, that's an estimate, don't hold me to it. And this year, it's about 23 people. So that's 43 people, and you're still missing 29. So why would we?
Well, I would say because the need still exists. And again, if my responsibility and my law is to present a needs-based budget, here it is. Now, if we went as far as prioritizing things, I would have to say that our priority should be, when we're considering a budget, teacher salary. And again, I hear your point about not being able to address the national teacher shortage, that there's a micro issue, or there's a macro issue here, and there's a micro issue. There is a teacher shortage. And if you remember, just maybe 10 years ago, and you and I have talked about this, we had a shortage for service people, right? We didn't have enough people to do the electricity, we didn't have enough people to do the plumbing. How much does it cost now when you have to call a service technician to come to your house to get that work done? I think the reason partially for that is because there was a supply and demand issue, and we're addressing it a certain way. So on the micro level, when we talk about those six school divisions that share us, the school divisions that our teachers can wake up tomorrow and say, "That commute's not that bad." We have to be competitive with those school divisions as best we can in order to attract and retain qualified teachers.
So, I'm not disagreeing with you on salary adjustments, totally. But, so in the last eight years, there's been about a 25% increase in salary at the schools, and this would be another seven, that'd be 30%. I don't know if 30% for nine years keeps up with other professions. I don't think we're getting 30% in nine years. You know, if we could maybe trim some stuff and focus on the salaries, I would be more interested in some of these things than at this moment. I agree that keeping a qualified teacher in the school is a big difference. And, you know, you need to preschool. We don't want to put those kids on the oak tree, you know what I mean?
Right.
So anyhow, that's all I have to say at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Ms. Binder.
Yes, before I ask, I want to, since I have now, dealing with the middle school athletic director, I will say, to be honest, her job is almost like the high school director. You have so many sports at the middle school. I mean, my first time going around coaching, there wasn't as many sports. And she was out there tonight, before I left, she was still out there doing her job. And so I didn't know it was that little. She does a lot for that amount of money. So I understand that position because I see it every day. So it is amazing that now a middle school position could, you know, you have that many sports, that many activities, scheduling and all that. So I did want to make a point that I see that need there. My question was on, because somebody already mentioned the school security officer. Up in the student and family services, the student and staff wellness, there's two positions there. What is that position?
Yeah, so if you remember, we went into this school year with a grant-funded position. That individual has since left us. And really, what the idea was in that was to make sure that through that grant, there's a lot of, well, we've already talked about the challenges. You know, there's a whole lot of challenges, not only with our student population right now, but even our professional staff has some wellness issues. What we're hoping to do is come up with a division-wide approach to making sure that we consider student and staff wellness. And I think this approach through the stipend model is much more cost-efficient than what the grant was affording us before. There's pockets, there's real pockets of greatness in our school division when it comes to student and staff wellness initiatives. I'm always happy to promote, if you are a Potomac Elementary School parent or student, they've got a PBIS program there right now that I would parade around to anybody that would want to see. There's a lot of pockets of really cool things that are happening. What this approach would do would make sure that we've got somebody to manage and oversee, and really, someone to, in a school division that has three elementary schools, create some level of consistency with initiatives across those three different elementary schools.
So would this be already a staff member that gets a stipend?
Yes, ma'am.
And what kind of certification? Like a teacher, are they going to have to be admin level, or what kind of?
No, it wouldn't be admin level. It wouldn't be any certification, it would be additional responsibilities.
Okay, so just an identified staff member has that set of abilities to be able to perform the service?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other citizen advisors have any questions they would like to ask of Dr. Boyd currently? Not right now, okay, I'll come back to you guys again, but I just want to make sure. Mr. Collins, do you have something else?
So the student and staff wellness is mental wellness or physical wellness?
It's more about, I want to say mental wellness, but it's not mental wellness. It's more about social awareness, being able to acclimate back into the school division, making sure that you appreciate how to cohabitate, making sure that you, it's initiatives. If you know what positive behavioral intervention supports, I know you know. It talks more about appropriate behavior in the school, reinforcement for those behaviors, making sure that we take care of ourselves, understand how we project to others, and also understand how we appreciate and understand others. So that would be the approach with that position.
So as far as the employees are concerned, their health wellness, mental health wellness, there's assets through the health insurance that they can use?
For extreme cases.
You have a certain amount of mental health in your health insurance you can use per year, which is like seven or eight visits to a counselor. So what would this person do? I mean, if they're not certified to counsel in mental wellness, I would think that would be a challenge, especially a major challenge.
So I know your school, and I know not everybody is, but I know you know quite well what the Renaissance program is, and making sure that you consider the climate and the culture of the school building, because
Is that what this is?
That's a lot of what this is.
If this is the Renaissance, I'm 1,000% in.
Okay, well, that's a lot of what it is.
1,000% health.
Okay, all right. Understood.
Anyone else have any questions? Otherwise, we'll let, oh, Ms. Kupka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have one more question. Dr. Boyd, what is the justification for your high school and middle school instructional technology liaison positions, which are currently 10-month employees, being extended to 11-month employees?
Yes, so we have gone, and I think everyone knows, to a one-to-one initiative across the school division, which means every one of our students has a Chromebook. What that has created over the last couple of years is a huge backlog of work to do on those Chromebooks over the summer months. What we have done in, you know, the past few years is figure out ways to pay those employees hourly if we have to. It would probably almost be a cost savings, I don't have the numbers in front of me right now. But what our hope is, is to take those individuals, which are very skilled and aware of the instructional technology, the ITL stands for Instructional Technology Liaison, and make sure that they've got those Chromebooks in that 11th month, when there's no students or staff in the building, to update and prepare them for the following school year.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Stonehill, did you have a question?
Yeah, what was that Renaissance thing you were speaking of?
Speak to it. It's a program, if you Google it, it's through Jostens. Jostens is familiar to most folks through, like, graduation apparel and yearbooks and things of that nature. But it's so much more than that, really. It's a program that you could really talk about, I could talk about all night. But it recognizes reward, it recognizes responsibility. It really takes the opportunity throughout the school year to do all kinds of recognition programs, making sure you recognize your staff, making sure that you recognize your students, all students. One of the terms they use is camouflage students. So what they do in the process is they dig deep into your enrollment, they dig deep into your professional staff, and they look for ways to just promote the excellence that occurs in the school building. And it really, it's an initiative that makes sure that a school is more than just the nuts and bolts. It's the culture, it's the climate of the building. And if that's good, usually instruction, usually the well-being of our staff, all of those things are clicking at a higher rate if the Renaissance program is operating smoothly.
And they also have a lot of free resources. Usually, there's a certain amount of people you send to a conference. They get training and so forth, they come back and they train others. But they have constant resources that don't cost anything. So it's a really good program, I would like to see it in the whole division.
In which one of those positions that you were saying that that was associated with? Because that job that you were describing as a parent?
Is a parent?
Sounds like a parent's job.
No, it wouldn't, so this is within the school building. So this is, I mean, when you walk into any school building, when you walk into any government building, there's a feel, there's the first person you talk to, there's the front office secretary, there's people that greet you, there's a feel to it, there's a temperature, there's a climate. A parent is not, this is not going to be parenting, this isn't going to be the well-being of a particular child. This is going to be the whole school. This is going to be the way that we see kids, the way that we recognize, not just athletes. One of the examples Jostens uses all the time, or the Renaissance program uses all the time, is that we, for 100 years, recognized athletes. We've given them letter jackets, we've given them letters, we've given them pens. And they use that same concept and idea to make sure that we're recognizing all of the individuals in the school division, children and staff alike, so that, you know, everyone feels proud enough to wear that letter on their chest. And it just creates a nice culture in the building.
Mr. Stonehill, it's a lot about culture of the schools, and not just, it also goes into the family from the kids coming home to the family. It's, you know, I'm a cutter, you know, I like to cut money. If I'm in for it, you know it's got to be.
Okay, I think I'm almost to the last slide, next slide, please. All right, so appropriation categories, you'll see, again, this is the same information that we've covered already. You'll see fiscal year '22, '23 on the left-hand side, the proposed fiscal year '24 in the middle column, and really, the difference on the right-hand side. So as many of you guys know, the state funds by appropriation category, they don't fund by appropriation category, but they list the way that money falls within each appropriation category. And you'll see that the majority of the additional request or the difference falls within instruction. So what sits in instruction? Our staff, our teachers, that's where the instruction, that's where your salary increases, that's where your positions are, that's where most of the most influential factors are in public education when it comes to the quality of education we offer our students. Next slide. All right, and then I'll just finish with, you know, the budget priority. Again, I know there's a lot of stuff in here, a lot to chew on, and I certainly invite everybody to please reach out to me. I'll be happy to take as deep of a dive as you want into anything in this budget booklet. It would be beneficial to me, and I would enjoy the opportunity to have that discourse with each and every one of you. But as we prioritize issues in this budget request, I would ask that you seriously consider prioritizing our teachers. As I already mentioned, there's no factor out there that's more influential into the quality of education for the children in this county than a qualified teacher in the classroom. And we've got to make sure that we can attract and retain qualified teachers. It's for the betterment of our children, it's for the betterment of our community. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So 29 vacancies, and under instruction, there's a number of different roles. For instance, like you have the activities director, which I'm assuming falls under instruction. Is that a correct assessment?
Yes.
So I guess where I'm going to go in is, of those 29 vacancies, how many of those are going to be, I guess, the most traditional idea of a teacher in the classroom with students? How many of them are going to be positions where it's, like, for instance, like the activities director, not that they don't have an impact, but it's not necessarily dealing with the most traditional education kind of point of view?
So the 29 vacancies that we had in October are all teachers?
All teachers.
Those are all teachers?
Are there other vacancies on top of that, that are outside of just that view of teachers as well?
Yes.
How many vacancies?
Yeah, I think we were around 40-ish at one point. And that's from bus drivers, that's from custodial staff, that's from everybody that works in the school division. But the 29 vacancies is just teachers.
Tracking, I appreciate it, thank you for that clarification. Talking about the idea, so you have 29 vacancies, obviously, that you still have, there has to be a responsible adult in the room. And so I understand that, obviously, they're not going to receive the same compensation necessarily as a trained and qualified teacher. Do you have a rough idea of the average delta between what, like, if you had a long-term sub who's doing the job for a full year versus a certified qualified teacher who's doing that job? Because I appreciate, you still need monies in order to fill those roles and have people in there. And then, as you brought up, there's a certain number that's coming back to the county.
It's substantially less. I don't know the factor right off the top of my head. So basically, you're asking the difference between a long-term sub filling the position for the school year versus a qualified teacher in the classroom? So if you figure just some rough numbers, you know, a substitute, and again, there's varying ranges of qualifications that depict what rate that substitute earns. But let's say, on average, they make $100 a day?
Okay.
Okay, 180 days of school, which takes you up to about $18,000-ish, somewhere in that ballpark. And then, our first-year teacher salary is $46,000. So, I mean, yeah, we're saving some money there, but at the expense.
Really where you want to be saving money?
Yeah, not where we want to be saving money.
That's not what I was trying to, that's not what I was looking for. I was just trying to understand that difference. And then going back to the request in regards to moving that first-year salary up to $50,000, I'm hearing at least a lot of localities in our region are also, schools are requesting pretty significant increases to their budget in order probably to address a lot of similar situations. And I know it's forecasted, let's just pretend, we just give you, and give is probably the wrong word, but that we fully fund your request, and then you're able to do all these things. Do you think we'd actually be third? And I know it's a guess, I'm not going to hold you to it, even if it's incorrect.
It's a guess, I can tell you that just this, so I'll tell you that I already know Stafford is giving more. This morning in the Freelance Star, there was
Yeah, we're not beating Stafford though.
Yeah, we're not going to beat Stafford. I know that, I know that. This morning in the Freelance Star, Fredericksburg, they have come out and they're actually, to be honest, to take a step back, in the front cover of your binder, what you're going to see is a comparison of our teacher salary scale versus all of the other local versus all of the other localities that I've mentioned here this evening. And what you'll see is the salary scale from last year compared to this year and the difference between them. And if you guys remember last year, the state came out and said, hey, we're gonna give everybody a 5% increase. And many localities took huge strides last year in teacher salary. If you look at that scale, you'll see that some localities gave as high as nearly 18% for their teach, uh, on certain steps of their teacher salary scale. Uh, we on average, last year, we gave teachers a step and roughly, if you look at that, about a 3% increase. So we were far outpaced last year, which put us in that position of, of fifth of those six surrounding counties. Going into this budget season, I was really thinking, and, and in speaking with many superintendents, I was really thinking they stretched themselves so far last year that um, 5%, the state recommendation was gonna be as high as they were gonna be able to go, going into this budget season. I think some of our surrounding school divisions will be there at 5%, but as I said already, uh, I know Stafford is higher. I know uh, Fredericksburg City is gonna be higher than 5%. Uh, so again, I mean, just making sure, when that margin becomes so great, and it most certainly is between us and Stafford right now, when it becomes so great that we can't convince teachers to stay here for the good reasons that they should stay here for, when you're talking about 10 to 15,000 dollars for a commute that is, I, I say, you know, 20 minutes, but as I mentioned earlier, I don't wanna get into this, I know that this debate is deep, but many of our teachers do not live in King George County. Because they can't find housing in King George County. So they're living in the city of Fredericksburg, they're living in Stafford and living in Spotsy. So when I say that they're wrestling with having to commute, they're not. They're deciding whether or not they wanna wake up and roll out of bed and go to a community that's paying 15,000 dollars more, or do they wanna continue to drive route, down Route 3? And we have great schools and a great school division, and many folks are still saying, I wanna come to King George. I wanna come to King George High School, I wanna come to King George Middle School for a number of reasons. Uh, but as that margin continues to grow, it's getting harder and harder to sell.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. I'll start with Ms. Binder.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to make a, a point or two. I've talked to supervisors from the other localities and, and their budgets are, the increases are high.
Yeah.
Cause I know Spotsy in particular is 21 million more.
Yeah.
And they have a bigger student population, more teachers, but it's, there, there is a point to be made is how we can't totally compete with them because they get more per every cent of tax increase. I mean, Spotsy gets 1.9 million, Stafford 2.1 million for every penny they raise, so, but we gotta find a balance somewhere.
Mr. Collins.
So I'm hopeful that this year, that the board will agree to approve by appropriations. Cause I think that you'll be better off, or at least the teachers would be better off uh, by appropriation. So you could, you could send money towards them and not towards other things. I also am a little bit concerned because uh, at the last board meeting, we spoke about um, a reassessment. And so the last assessment was done on the high property values and 50% of the LCI is the property value. So what, what would that, what would happen there? So we have to keep that, be mindful of that. But hopefully we can do by appropriations and I think that if that was the case, the teachers would probably be happier than if we didn't.
Let's go up to Jim, anything else?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if I could make a request, Dr. Boyd, could you have a binder made for our citizens?
Absolutely.
As well, and just have it delivered to county administration, cause.
Yep.
Um, I would like to see another meeting, just with, with the school board presentation, um, with their budget. Cause I still have a great, I went line by line through the budget builder detail, so I have many more questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you.
Before I move on to uh, Mr. Stonehill, um, I was entertaining the idea of trying to maybe set up um, a joint meeting with the school board and with the board of supervisors, obviously, and, and Dr. Boyd and, and order to have that discussion. So would my colleagues be amenable to, and we don't have to set the date right now, cause just saying, uh, but, but the idea of having a joint meeting to have those discussions? Okay, all right. We'll look to try to set something up. Um, and like I said, we don't need, we don't have to do it tonight. Maybe if we get to the end, we could discuss it since I think we do have a, a number of school board members here. But we'll come back, we'll circle back to that. Uh, Mr. Stonehill, did you have anything else?
Just gonna say thank you and your staff for getting this done this early, cause it's always, we're always waiting for it. And it delays so much, but hey, I certainly appreciate um, getting all that stuff here. I would just be, just very mindful of fluff, waste, things like that. I mean, I'm all for money going to teacher salaries. Absolutely, if it's going to teacher salaries. I mean, you know, uh, all of our departments have a lot of waste and a lot of fluff built into them. Um, I would just wanna make sure that, you know, the money that we do approve um, to go for what's, you know, absolutely necessary in the teacher. Teacher retention and stuff and the, the shortage of teachers. I mean, I've talked to King George teachers, Westmoreland, Stafford teachers. What about um, uh, you know, money's great, but what are the work environment? Uh, support from staff, um, you know, misbehaving kids, things like that. A lot of teachers are like, you know, we don't feel safe. We're not getting, you know, we get disruptive kids, you know, the sheriff's office shows up, they take care of these kids. There's no discipline and there's no follow-through. And a lot of the teachers that I've, well, some of the teachers who have complained to me, they said, you know, we don't get any support. Money's money, that's great, but if we don't feel safe, um, you know, for, you know, whatever the, the salaries of the teachers were, it's not worth it. They just throw their hands up and they leave. I mean, and I've heard that all the way from, you know, Pennsylvania down to, you know, Virginia, right here into King George. I mean, what are you doing about that to follow through with getting, you know, a few bad apples out? You know, so the rest of the kids and the teachers do feel safe.
Sure. Um, so some of those initiatives you saw, as far as the, what we talked about with the Renaissance program is certainly one that you will see a direct influence on uh, how comfortable teachers are within the school building. Uh, the school security officers are, you know, they do not have the authority of a school resource officer, but they're pretty close to having the authority of a school administrator. Uh, and, and both of those uh, positions or the characteristics involved with those, both of those are very valuable and important in the process of addressing student discipline and behavior. I hear that too. I, I hear that everywhere I go. And I can tell you that most um, people will tell you that support weighs above salary. They will. Um, and, and it's honestly, um, one of the reasons I think, and, and you can always do better, I, I'm not here to, you know, beat our, pat our own chest or, or give ourselves a pat on the back. But I do believe it's one of the things that King George County can excel in when it comes to competing for teachers. We're small. I mean, we're, we're not, we're not so large that we lose track of our staff. We know our staff. Uh, we're not so large that we don't, um, I, I mean, I spend every day in, in our schools. I spend every morning in either the middle school or the high school because there's kids in the building at 6:30, 7 o'clock. Um, I, I think what you'll find as far as support compared to some of our, the surrounding school divisions, I, I would hold up the efforts that we have there to, to many other school divisions around us. I feel, I feel confident and comfortable in telling you that. Uh, as, as far as other initiatives are concerned, um, just being here this evening and, and making sure that teachers know that teachers are first is, is a, I've talked to teachers in our school, in our school divisions every day, and they really appreciate the idea that going into this budget request and even the comments you guys have made tonight as far as making teachers first, I, I think is amazingly impactful in our community. So I, I think that's gonna go a long ways uh, with our instructional staff, our, you know, being able to attract and, and retain qualified teachers in our school division if, if we continue to push and make them first. Thank you. So, yes, sir.
I'm gonna circle back uh, to our citizens to see if they had anything they wanted to ask, um, or any comments they would like to provide.
Dr. Boyd, first I'd like to thank you again for this presentation. I think it's what, my fifth time up here, or sixth time up here. I've been through every line item on the thing as this is tough guy has and. And we've talked about those uh, quite a bit. I echo what Mr. Stonehill said as far as uh, your fourth goal here, or our fourth goal here, which is safety. Which affects morale in the building, uh, especially, I mean, all of them now. With COVID coming in, on the elementary level, the second graders are just off the charts. I spent some time at an elementary school a couple of weeks ago and there was two incidents. And on that Friday afternoon that I was there. I don't see anything up here on a behavior specialist. I think that's something we are probably gonna have to look at in the future. Cause right now we're lumping everything into special ed and special ed is not all of. Behavior specialists are definitely so. I think this request is modest. This, this budget request is modest compared to what we're gonna need uh, in the very near future.
Thank you.
I'll just echo what's been said about the behavior. You, you said it very eloquently. Uh, the bottom line is really just that the behavior's been atrocious since COVID. Uh, one of my colleagues in Stafford said they came back from COVID, uh, the students came back feral. Like they, like, and, and they're right. I mean, they, they don't know how to behave and interact in that kind of setting anymore. It's terrible. So, yeah, I don't know if it's a school security officer or what, what the answer is, but we need eyes and hands in our buildings. Um, a couple other just quick comments. Uh, the school where I work is a nationally recognized Renaissance school and it's a terrific program. I'll leave it at that. Um, and, and the teacher salaries do matter. I have lots of friends, I teach in Stafford, I have lots of friends who teach here in King George and they're talking to me. They've seen our, our Stafford proposed budget and they're coming to me. I'm not, not taking your teachers. I'm not recruiting, but they're coming to me and um, so it does, it matters.
Yeah.
So, Dr. Boyd, I'd definitely like as well to uh, thank you for your presentation tonight. Um, I think that as I sat and I listened to uh, you know, you and then the board members uh, you know, asked their questions to you. I think one of the challenge that we all know is that the dollars coming into this county are finite. We understand, and me as a citizen, I definitely understand. My son attended the school system here. Um, and it, you know, it was, believe it or not, we left uh, Prince William County schools because of some of the incidents that he was incurring up in Prince William and we moved to the school system here. So I do understand that. Um, but I think that definitely if we can, you know, it would be appreciative to get the book to be able to look into your builder because knowing that the, that the funds are gonna be finite and this board is challenged with trying to balance the needs of the county across the board, that you take a look or, you know, to see where you can reduce in other areas to, you know, um, definitely try to uh, compensate the teachers. A hundred percent. Uh, you know, understanding the need for additional security because uh, when I first arrived here, the middle school had a program where fathers, like much like the PTA, fathers came into the school to, uh, I attended, uh, I did one day a week, so four days a month where my, I worked for the federal government, they authorized me that time. So there are potential to look at things like that to help with, you know, again, these are parents coming in. They can't, they have no authority either, but it is a set, uh, another set of hands, another set of eyes. So to take a look at something like that, that could definitely help. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Binder, you had further comments or questions?
And uh, you, you stole my thunder there on that one because um, I have mentioned this to a couple of school board members. I think I have mentioned it to you, Dr. Boyd, is in Louisiana, I just don't remember the name of the, they have a program where dads come in and grandfathers and they're all checked, background checked and everything. But they come in and do that assistance so that the teachers feel appreciated, they don't lose their planning period or they don't lose their lunch break, break. They come in and they monitor the cafeteria or they do other like make copies or things that the teachers now have to do that takes away from the time they used to have way back in the day when I subbed, that they had a little extra, you know, what you normally have for planning and all that. So that, that was one thing, I would, I echo that, that that might be something, cause there's a lot of folks out in the community, especially retirees, that probably wouldn't mind coming in that neck and say, because where I'm coming from, too, mentioning is besides the salary, there might be other things we can do to make, to keep, retain the teachers, like paying, you know, that or paying a little bit more in the health insurance, like those, those perks, those benefits. So that, that is something, I was just gonna echo that maybe we could look at too. And I will even tell you as a track coach, coaching now, four years past when I coached before, that kids are a little different in their behavior and having to pay attention and things I wouldn't have had to watch and be careful of 10 years ago there, now there, you gotta have, be a little more hands-on, so.
Mr. Collins, you have something else?
Dr. Boyd, thanks for a nice presentation. You've taken Dr. Princeton's place well on the presentation. I've had three kids graduate King George schools and they're all very successful, despite their father. Expect yours will be too.
Despite their father?
So my eight years on the school board, what I've observed and what I tried to work on was um, stuff. So what I, what I had noticed, continue to notice is like, so there's a teacher down at Potomac says, we don't need any more books or stuff. We don't need, we don't need that. We don't even use the books half the time. Last year I was in the middle school and in the back of the stage, there was piles of books and never been unwrapped. So spending money on stuff that never gets used or utilized. I think that if we could look through some of these things, you being new to the job, you can go full tilt on that and um, break away some of that uh, problematic spending. And then you could focus towards the, spending towards the personnel. The behavior, um, you know, I was on the school board and, and I voted to keep the schools open and I warned of this specific, what was gonna happen if we closed the school. We're gonna have the behavior off the chain and now you got it. And unfortunately, the state legislature does not allow you to kick kids out of school. So it's one big pot. You can't pick your kids. You get what you get. And so, you know, one problem child can take five people. There was, there was one kid at Sealsdale Elementary. It wasn't higher than this, that threw chairs around all day and five people chasing them down. He's gone now, but um, he's probably at the middle school. But um, you know, the behavior thing is a huge problem. The um, that's what I hear from teachers all the time. They don't fuss as much about salaries. They do, you know, say that. And I, I understand. My, my wife left retired from King George County, making a fair amount of money. But she went to work Stafford making a lot of money for a part-time teacher. It's kinda, I can't even tell you what it is, cause it's kinda gross that they pay her. So I understand that we need to try to compete better. But I'll reiterate, if we go towards the appropriation, the categories this time, we'd probably be better off with the compensation. I hope that you'll work on the stuff, try to get a handle on all the stuff. And I wish every, all the teachers luck and we'll do what we can to support them. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Dr. Boyd, thank you so much. I appreciate you coming out, providing, again, thank you for getting to us early, but I'll let you go.
I appreciate it. Uh, if I could just, I, I wanted to mention just a few more things if I could.
Sure, please feel free.
Anyone that's interested in volunteering, we, we've got a process and we're ready to sign you up. So I, I'm familiar with, we used to call it the dogs program where the, it was, yeah, watchdogs, that's right, in Richmond County. And certainly would encourage that. Uh, as far as the textbook line, um, Sergeant Major actually brought this up in, in our, one of our uh, budget advisory committees. The textbook line right now is about 25% of what it traditionally is. I mean, in some years, uh, I've, I've gone back. It's textbooks are, I mean, if you've got, if you have a kid in college right now, you I've gone back, it's textbooks are, I mean, if you've got, if you have a kid in college right now, you know about textbooks. They're not cheap. We've spent sometimes upwards of a million dollars on textbooks in the school division across K-12. Right now, that money in the budget is about $100,000, so a tenth of what it potentially has been in the past. But not to say we can't continue to dig into it more and take a look at other areas. One of the things we're looking at right now, we have a partnership with Fredericksburg Regional Alternative Education Program. I personally, and I've spoken to some other people in the school division, would like to keep that as an option, but see if we can leverage some of those funds possibly in our operating budget to have a alternative program just in King George County. So one that doesn't send students, you know, to Fredericksburg for long periods of time, nine weeks, 18 weeks are usually the time that you're sent to alternative ed or the entire school year. But more of a, you know, an opportunity for students to step away from the distractions that they're, that they're getting in the school division. I was former principal of Rappahannock High School in Warsaw and we had a very successful alternative education program that operated at the Northern Tech, Northern Technical Center down there and would certainly like to see that model applied in King George because it's certainly one that provides an extra level of support for our teachers and gives really students an opportunity that need that opportunity to step away from the distractions in the building, to do those things. Now, when we're, you know, again, I would encourage everybody to, and give as many of these budget books out as we possibly can because more eyes on it to me is, is an important thing. If you have any questions and you want to email me, it would mean a lot to me because I can, you know, throughout my work, we dig deep into providing the best possible answer I can for you with the information that goes even well beyond the depth of the things in this budget book, which goes pretty deep. Eighty percent of a school's operating budget is personnel. Twenty percent of a school's operating budget is stuff. So we can dig real deep into stuff and there's places we can dig deep. But we're not gonna solve the 80% problem by cutting the 20% problem. We gotta look a little deeper in creative ways there. So I'll stop right there. I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. I am so appreciative and blessed to be able to sit here and give you this presentation. I certainly don't envy the position that you guys are in and the resources that you have to juggle and balance and certainly understand and respect the decisions that you have to make moving forward. So thank you guys for the opportunity. And I'm here, if there's any questions moving forward and certainly would look forward to. I hope I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but I think we would certainly be interested in setting down together with you and seeing how we can move forward together. Thank you. That's my son. TC's best friend.
All right, Mr. Miller. I'll send it back to you, I assume, for the discussion on the new position requests?
Yes, we are. Yes, we have a list of folks that are suggesting some new positions in the upcoming budget and so we have a, I think we have a, is that up there? Okay, well, I do have a list, so we'll get that list up here in a second, but we do have Ms. Hart, who is here to talk to you about the proration clerk for half of the year, which would begin January 1. And I think Ms. Han will be providing an update on the treasurer's portion of this similar position, right? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to put in a request for a proration individual to do the proration for the, for the office. What else? It's my first time asking for a individual, so I don't know what you want. So what else can I provide you?
Do you want to explain?
Y'all want a position, so y'all explain to me. Turn the table on you.
Yeah, so obviously I know this has, the genesis of this is from the request in order to do the proration for the tax, which we had, yes, apologies, personal property tax. We had the joint work session, work session with, with board and your office and the treasurer's office as well. And so I understand the, I understand this. I guess I'll ask my colleagues if you understand that. And I believe they all do. So I guess for everyone else's edification, it would just be for the purposes of filling that position and there is, it's a joint one, so it impacts both the commission of the revenues and the treasurer's office. I know that Ms. Han will have.
Each department, the commissioner of revenue and the treasurer asking for a position.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand. I more meant the idea that
They kinda go hand in hand.
Coming out of that, that original meeting because of the desire to be able to prorate personal property tax, there was a need for both those departments to hire someone to perform those duties. And so it'll be starting January, or sorry, in the middle of the actual calendar year. So that's why it's a half, half funded. So I understand that. I guess I'll ask my colleagues, do you have any questions about it? I feel like it's pretty straightforward since we did bring up the fact that we wanted the proration. Ms. Cupka.
I was just gonna say, if you could explain it for our citizen board as well as anybody else that wasn't here for that meeting, exactly what this person's gonna do?
Right now, you're charged for your vehicles on January 1. What you own on January 1 is what we bill for. We do not prorate, meaning you pay for the entire year if you move out in February. Folks don't like that. Had some today, conversations with some, but the board has requested us to start prorating. So if you move out in February, we're only gonna bill you from the time, say, January 1 to February 3, whenever you move. Then you go to your other locality and they're gonna pick you up for the rest of the time because we prorate. Because we would be prorating. So does that help you to understand? Good, good, certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming out this evening. So what do you and/or the treasurer have an idea? What, are you gonna need stuff for these new positions as well? Because we just spent a lot of time talking about stuff.
Yes, we've, I've got a quote for computers, computer screen, everything, the printer, a desk, a chair, that's about a little over 3,000, 3,655. And then with the individual salary on top of that.
Okay, so if we just kinda ballparked it, it would probably be about twice that because you would need stuff and the treasurer would need stuff for your new staff members.
Yeah, I guess he would. I'm not sure what Randy's gonna need, but yes.
Okay. I think that's all I have for right now. Thanks very much.
Budget Advisory Committee, anyone have any questions for Ms. Hart? Thank you, Ms. Hart. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize.
Excuse me, this stuff that we're, we're talking about, office materials that you need, the dust, the chairs, the computers. There is a way, if it's still possible, Major Callahan, you can join in on this, please. If it's still possible to get this stuff through GSA, is that still, it used to be called dermo years ago? It's still there? Where you can go in and, I mean, they've got tons, since all of the government offices closed down, there's tons of equipment that they, they give to counties. So we don't have to go out and buy this stuff. It's, it's, it's still in effect. What's it called now?
It's GSA, but it is still, it's the Defense Reutilization and Materials Office, so dermo or DrMO. The facility was located in the Springfield office. That is now shut down, but they've shifted it to Fort Meade. Like I get the emails daily, they're begging people to come take stuff out of this warehouse. So that is something that I can definitely send over to Mr. Stonehill, who, you know, my, and maybe it's something you all can take a look into because literally a lot of that furniture is brand new. It'll be something that will have gone into a general officer's office. He doesn't like it. So they send it to the, you know, over to DrMO and they do whatever they have to do. And it isn't just about furniture. As the Sergeant Major said, there is computers as well as, and monitors, things like that. As a matter of fact, we, I know your textile is at work, 60-inch monitors, we just dermoed 130 of them from our, from our operations center, but there was a reason for it because we went back to a smaller one. Don't be calling, complaining to the federal government. But I just wanted to say that that is there, so, and it is something that's definitely available to the county.
I guess my concern on the computer, Mr. Dines would be involved in that to see if they would be, you know, hold our program that we would need downloaded on it. So I guess, you know.
And they allow you to come in and test everything before you walk away with anything because they don't want to give you anything broken.
Certainly.
Even if it's not the computer, I mean, there's, even if it's part of it, might, might be a resource for meeting some of the needs, even if it's not all.
How would I get information? Can you provide information to folks here or?
Yes, I said, I would send it over to Mr. Stonehill. When I get home tonight, I'll go find the last email that they sent me, get you a point of contact with county.
Thank you.
Mr. Stonehill probably sent it to Mr. Miller. And then he can, he can procure stuff for all, all the county.
Okay. It might be something the whole building would need, sounds like.
Anyone else, do anyone else have any other questions for Ms. Hart? Okay, thank you.
Oh, you don't want to just go ahead and do Mr. Jones's? I mean, you, okay.
We're gonna hurry up sheriff before the chief comes, you know. Go get your money. I ain't worried about the chief.
Well, that ain't, that ain't the reason why I'm worried about the chief. Okay, I guess I was prepared to talk about at least three positions in the office, but Ms. Han had set me straight on some. So we're talking about a courtroom ballots position. For the two courtroom ballots positions that I'm requesting, the need comes from having a larger courthouse. At this point in time, I have seven full-time positions and one part-time position with two vacancies that were in the process of filling as I, as I speak, which would bring me to a total of nine full-time when we're full and one part-time ballots for two courtrooms, which is what we're processing now. To provide the proper security when the new courtroom opens, we'll need the following. We're gonna need a total of six deputies to cover the three courtrooms when they're in sessions. The judges have requested a minimum of two ballots per courtroom. We're gonna need two at the entrance for screenings when the citizens are coming into the courthouse. One to shuttle defendants between the holding cells and the prospective courtrooms that they need to be in. One in the control center monitoring the cameras and operating the doors and the elevators that are gonna be in the courthouse. And one supervisor checking on the personnel and ensuring that everything is secure. The two positions, if they were granted, would bring the staff to the bare minimum. And these numbers that I've quoted, they don't take into effect the fact that there may be a ballot on vacation, in training or out doing a transport while these are in, the courts in session. To give you an idea of what the workload was for the courtroom, the courthouse that we have now in existence, for the fiscal year of 2021, General District Court had 16,305 cases. Juvenile Domestic Relations Court had 3,355 cases. Circuit Court had 2,076 criminal cases, 216 civil cases, 77 civil juvenile appeal cases, 21 jury trials that they prepared for, with 18 of the juries being called off at the last minute and they actually sat three juries in that courthouse. Some of the defendants that we were held in the holding cells that the sheriff's office is responsible for, they had 271 adult defendants brought by RJ, which is the jail, the Rappahannock Regional Jail. 12 defendants that were juveniles brought by the Rappahannock Regional Detention Center. 96 defendants were transported by the sheriff's office. And in total of miles for transported by the sheriff's office was 14,931 miles were traveled by the office bringing defendants to that courthouse. So essentially, you can, you can just assume that this is gonna be doubled, if not tripled, with the new courthouse being much, much larger. So before I move on to the road detective, the deputy sheriff one, I'll entertain any questions about the two courtroom ballots.
So anyone have any questions? Okay.
Moving right on. The need for a road deputy position that I'm asking for is so I can promote an experienced road deputy to CID as a detective. The detective division works all major cases within the county. They also assist with the CPS, Child Protective Services, on some of the cases they're investigating, which is very time-consuming. With the new legislation from Richmond on search warrants, what was a one or two paper affidavit to get a search warrant is now four or five papers, which makes it very difficult and very time-consuming to, to write a search warrant. At this time, I have six detectives that are averaging anywhere between 10 and 15 cases per detective. When a detective receives a case, they must triage these cases from the more serious cases to the least. And unfortunately, the least gets put on the back burner. Some back burner cases could be solved in a timelier manner if the detective assigned could show full attention to the case, but unfortunately, due to the number of cases the detective carries, the more serious cases gets that attention. To give you some numbers of where we are, cases handled by CID are up by 7% from 204 in 2021 to 219 in 2022. For the first two months of 2023, they are already at 54, 54 cases, which is a 40% jump from the last year of 32. Adding another detective would relieve some of the caseload on the six and allow them to be more, allow them to have more time to show the back burner cases the attention that they deserve. So I'll entertain any questions at this time.
So anyone have any questions for sheriff about that position?
All right. I appreciate the time and the attention that y'all could share, show to this. Thank you.
Okay, the treasurer couldn't be here tonight, but he sent me a dialogue to share with you. So the treasurer's office is requesting an additional full-time employee in response to the county's initiative in transitioning to a prorating tax structure. As shared at the Board of Supervisors workshop with the treasurer's office and the commission of revenue on October 5, 2022, the treasurer visited with colleagues in the county treasurer's office to begin planning for a possible tax structure change. Also, the treasurer's office contacted other localities that prorate, such as the city of Manassas. And it was determined that an increased workload is to be expected and an additional employee would be needed. This is primarily for two reasons. Under a prorating tax structure, it is to be expected to incur increased billing. All new vehicles, as well as disposed vehicles registered in the King George, in King George, would be reviewed individually. The treasurer's office would be responsible for generating, mailing new bills created by citizens registering new vehicles or disposed, disposed vehicles would be abated by the commission of revenue's office. And each of these abatements must be reviewed by the treasurer's office to determine if payment has been received from their decision would need to be made to either refund or move a credit to another vehicle and then execute it. Also, increased customer service. With the increased billing, there would be an increased need for customer service. Between increased transactions and increased questions, concerns, that a ban on staff for customer service will be increased. Currently, the treasurer's office has the following staff and not all of them are full-time, but full-time, he has a office manager, a bookkeeper, collections officer, a treasurer, and then he also has part-time help that kinda fills in like administrative assistant. assistant and helping with collections, especially during the busy season. The additional employee would be what he would call a billing specialist, primarily responsible for all billing, including the prorated bills, and would assist with customer service. Again, as stated at the workshop, the treasurer's office has fielded many concerns throughout the years about the county not prorating taxes. The treasurer's office is committed to assisting in making the transition a reality and is devoted in continuing to provide the customer service our citizens deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Anyone have any questions? Okay. Awesome.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm requesting an additional position as a zoning enforcement officer. We have received a large increase in complaints, as well as with our new ordinance, it will give that position the ability to go out and ticket the violation and provide them a summons so that they could either appear in court or abate the violation. So this position would also need to hold a conservator of the peace. So above the usual stuff, they will also require about $1,000 worth of training. We did check with Bay Corp, and that insurance that we would need is already under our policy. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Hall about the position? Ms. Binder?
I, I do. So this would be in direct response to more call volume for violations that occur with our current ordinances and with our new, we expect to have more. Is that how I'm hearing it?
Yes, so currently it's handled as other duties as assigned. Since we put in our new system, we have received almost 60 complaints since August 15th. That does not include the repeat offenders. It doesn't include the complaints that we sometimes receive through the board, things of that nature. So we're receiving a lot of complaints now that people are staying at home. I guess our behaviors isn't so great as adults either, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Also, with the new ordinance, a lot of the input that we received was beautification of the county. This is a part of that as well.
Ms. Hall, what kind of complaints are we talking?
We are receiving anything from inoperative motor vehicles, signs, trash, building without permits, tenant complaints. This, this position may also field a lot of that as well.
Okay. Would this also take care of, you know, the county has a ordinance that says if you have one horse, for example, you have to have two acres, you have to have it on two acres of land. If you have two horses, it's three in there. So would this take care of that also?
Yes, sir, it does fall under the zoning ordinance. We don't envision that position to go out looking for these complaints. So ideally, in my mind, this is more of commercial complaint-driven complaints.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Stonehill, did you have something?
So this person you said is going to go out and ticket folks for violations, they're going to see it all the way through the court system as well?
Yes, sir.
And they're going to pick up all the popsicle signs?
I'm sure they will.
That would be, that would be awesome.
I thought she would be happy about that. Just don't know.
Because they're everywhere, on every pole, every telephone pole, every piece of property. So, and then you answer the other one that they're not actually going to be out looking, it's going to still, you're still going to be complaint driven?
Yes, and that's at the direction of the board. So if you want it to, you know, signs, for example, if you don't want complaints and you want that position to ride around and pick them up and ticket them without receiving complaints, we could certainly make that adjustment. But as of right now, we're doing that as other duties as assigned.
Okay, thank you.
Would they be doing the data center enforcement?
Well, if it is in the zoning ordinance, then yes, they will be handling that as well.
Anyone else have any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Thank you.
I'm trying to mop up what's left. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening to you. Members of the Citizen Budget Advisory Committee, good evening to you as well. So I'm asking for three positions in this year's budget request. These are half-year funded, which means that they would be funded and start on January 1 of 2024. Essentially, Chris, if you can go to the second slide, please. So this is pretty much our personnel staffing model. We have three shifts in order to provide 24/7 protection. So in our department, unlike most county departments, we have to operate on a seamless basis. Nights, weekends, holidays, essentially, there's always a shift. When someone calls 911, they're having a heart attack, there's been a car crash, their house is on fire, we can't have any break in service. So we operate on three 24-hour shifts. Company 1 is a station you're sitting in right now. Company 2 is our station in Dalgran. Company 3 is our station in Fairview Beach. These three positions would add one position per 24-hour shift. Okay? So each 24-hour shift in operations, we have 18 personnel currently. What I'm recommending is that we go to 19 personnel. That would take three people. These three people would be allocated at Company 3, which is in Fairview Beach at that station. Right now, we're currently being, you know, one of the challenges of a fire and rescue model where we're in charge of fire protection, we're also in charge of emergency medical services, is that you have to operate both fire trucks and you have to operate ambulances. And I think it's, you know, certainly no secret, you know, living in King George, we don't have a hospital in King George. We have medical facilities, but we don't have a hospital we can transport to. So all of our transports have to go outside of the county. Our primary transport destinations are certainly Mary Washington. Chris, if you can go to the first slide, I'm going to kind of work your finger here just a little bit. 2,067 times in 2022 that we went to Mary Washington, 12 times to the freestanding ER at Lee's Hill, 12 times to Stafford Hospital up by Stafford Courthouse off of Route 1, 121 times to Spotsylvania Regional Medical Center, and 20 times to La Plata Hospital, which is called, it's under University of Maryland, Charles Regional. Some people still refer to it as Civista, that's, that was its old name. But, so we also transport there on occasion. If you can go to the second slide again, Chris, thank you. If you were to ask me, Chief Moody, do you think we need, you think you need three people? And the answer is no, I actually think you need more. But the, you know, the way that you, you got to close that gap, and we also have to be mindful that, you know, you're not going to get all 18 in one year. You can't do that. However, we got to start, every budget year, we need to start anticipating and planning that you need to add three positions almost every year, automatic. Just like we asked for ambulances, that's on a rotational schedule. We need to look at that and understand that as the county is growing. And I will tell you, there may be years that you need possibly more. We're talking about a drug rehabilitation center with 100 beds coming to our county. Almost once a month, I'm in a development committee meeting of developers coming to put new neighborhoods in our community. The county's growing. Within the past, I looked at our calls, at our past five years. Chris, can you go to the next slide, please? This is a projection on our calls. Back in 2018, we're running 700 calls more per year than we did five years ago. Okay? 250 more calls than we did in 2022 than we did in 2021. 400 more calls than we did in 2021 to 2020.